Meeting come to order, please. First sort of business is public comment. Go on and speak. Raise your hand, you'll be recognized. Go to the podium, name an address in three minutes. Any public comment at this time. I don't see anybody jumping up and down, so we'll move on to the next item. Facilities Committee Chair is going to present a committee final presentation. Deborah, please.
the Facilities Committee is ready to present their repair findings. And what we'll speak about tonight is basically the evaluation methodology, different cost models, the Facilities Committee recommendation, a proposed implementation plan, sources of income, funding for the project, and then our recommended next steps. Okay, and those are the committee members. And just to remind everyone, too, the charge of this committee, as a select board laid out sometime in mid-2017, oh, 2016, sorry, was to inventory the facilities of the town. And we definitely left off the Highway Department and the Public Safety Complex, and we concentrated on the balance of the facilities of the town. And then the next step was the plan for current and future needs of these facilities, and to present options. And specifically, the requirement or the request was that we present three options. So from an evaluation methodology perspective, what we did is we selected 32 factors that we felt were important criteria for evaluating the various sites of the town. I've only laid out six here, the top ones. But you can see from these that there definitely is the, from this committee's perspective, the request to, or the idea that we wanted to preserve the historical context of the current buildings, and that we also wanted to preserve the town center. And then, of course, a functional plan, service to the public, accessibility of buildings, as well as available parking, were the highest on the list. So of the 32, these are the top six. And the next thing we did is we looked at various site options to be compared. And we literally listed everything that we could think of, from literally moving the entire town center to another location versus just taking the current buildings and adding, doing renovation and adding in place. Then we scored the options based on these factors. And we then looked at the options based on ballpark cost estimates. We used the architectural firm, AG Architects, to help us do this. And there were two that were way above everything else, and we threw those out, saying, you know, this is not a wise use of the taxpayer dollars. We considered the balance of them. And we also considered the opinions that the public forums, which were held in January and February, what the public input was to that, how the various options were received. And the second option finalists, so there's three. And the first one is the town hall, building a new town hall, plus additions and renovations in the town center horseshoe. This was the first choice based on the score, and it was the first choice based on the public forum. The second option that we're presenting is a new town hall at Stevens Field. This would also include additions and renovations in the town center horseshoe. It is only being presented as a contingency if for some reason the church property is not available. And the third one is the renovation and expansion of the current town center. Basically, the additions and renovations, but literally leaving it the footprint, much the same as it is, and building out like front and back of the town hall, and side ways to the library, et cetera, but trying to leave that footprint as true to its space today. This actually scored second, but we elected to make it third because we felt that the crowding of the buildings would not be aesthetically pleasing, would potentially not provide the right amount of parking for all of these facilities coexisting. So for that reason, that's why it's number three here. And the next thing we did was then we took these options, well, all of the options, but basically by this time we had boiled it down to three because we couldn't really do cost models on nine options. So again, AG Architects helped to, well, they did. They first estimated cost for these options. And this was based on questionnaires and interviews that they prepared and sent out to all the resources of the facilities. Literally, all the committees, all the commissions, the town personnel, town administrator, town secretary, code enforcement, library, across the board. And I didn't count them, but there was at least 20 of these that were compiled and put together. And so these were the proposed, what came to be known as the program. And AG Architects then estimated the cost for the three that we had put forth. And interestingly, the costs for the three were pretty similar. I mean, it was just, you know, I mean, when I say similar, we're talking, you know, like a couple hundred thousand, but no more than that, which from our perspective, working with estimates, were kind of in the ballpark. So we basically decided that they were relatively the same. So, and then, after reviewing that, and you'll see in a minute the cost for this, which was pretty high, we decided that we should come up with a medium cost plan. So using that high plan as a basis, so literally taking each line item, not deviating or cutting too much, we trimmed the square footage in other class where, you know, there might have been some area where, you know, renovation dollars were a little more, or square footage dollars were a little bit more. We, with the help of other townsfolk, we were able to get some good ballpark estimates of lower cost that we thought would be suitable. And we also kept the future service needs in place. So the high class was basically addressing like out into the future and building now. And what we said is, why don't we build now and make sure we're planning for the future? And we can build that if and when it ever comes that there is a need for that future expansion. The low class plan, which is one that the architectural firm also put together based on, you know, their institutional knowledge of building, was, is only for addressing the ADA and building code compliance items and the necessary repairs and maintenance. This is bare bones, and something that you just have to remember and think about is that this not only does not plan for the future, this reduces the size of every building in the town. And the reason, I mean, I'm going to go on to say it, but just so you have an idea of what I'm talking about, is that we either eliminate the use of basement, or we put in elevators. We increased two bathrooms all the way around. We have to move shelves in the library. We have to increase door sizes, et cetera, clearance. So just, it's not a very suitable plan. It's not suitable at all. This is pictorially what I just said. So at the top is basically the future program with all the wants and needs. Then the current program, what does the town of Lee need right now? And then the ADA, necessary repairs and maintenance. And you can see how each one of them is evaluated. Of course, the high addresses all. The medium addresses what we need, and then the low does not. The low plan is not recommended, as I just said, for all these various reasons. And it's the estimation, and it's truly an estimate, but roughly, the buildings would lose between 15 and 20 percent of useful space. The high plan, we, there's no other words other than it was really too cost. The cost was too high, and the benefits were very, very limited in terms of the cost balance. They're roughly $3 million different. So you have to have a lot of benefits to go up to that next level. So this is the medium plan. This is the one that the Facilities Committee is recommending. And this is to build a new town hall of 4,750 square feet, and to renovate the current town hall. And I did put these together with a subtotal because it is the feeling of the group that we would not, the town hall, the current town hall is of historic value and should be renovated and made usable. So if there is a new town hall, it's also our responsibility to take care of the current town hall. The second item is the library, which gets an addition and renovation. And the third one is the Historic Society Museum, which has all the renovation in place. And the two, that includes the current freight depot and the Hobo Shed. And these numbers do include site costs. They exclude operating costs, and that comes in second. It does exclude moving costs of staff and offices, and it excludes new furnishings. And then the renovation of the current town hall is based on preliminary walkthrough. We're a little bit closer now. A few of us met with a builder last week and feel that that number at 473 is pretty solid. But being an old building, just want to leave a caveat up there that, you know, it's possible that something could be found when they got deep in the trenches. But it's actually, I think the general feeling was it's maybe not as bad as everyone thought either. So that was good news. So these are the site costs. This also includes purchase of the church property. Purchase of the church property at 75, and then the septic system, the well, parking lot, sidewalks, general site work, landscaping, whatever will fit into that number. Is basically what we're thinking. We did try to get estimates on landscaping. That proved to be quite difficult because, as everyone knows, hardscaping can be $600,000 if you choose to spend that, or you can come back down and, you know, do some nice sawed and a few brushes and move on. So, but we felt that that was a good number to work with. The operating expense is, Scott was good enough to take the total, we have the total operating expense of the current buildings and the total square footage of the current buildings. And this does include the Public Safety Complex, but doesn't include the Highway Department. And the cost factor, as we called it, was $6.56. So then we multiplied that by the net expansion to have a total of $47,500. And just a couple of notes on this one. The thinking is that this would increase the current maintenance by approximately 20 hours per week. And one of the thinkings was that it would, it could possibly fund a full-time building manager and part-time employees totaling up to 80 hours per week. And the number also includes staff benefits, obviously, for a full-time person, and janitorial supplies, equipment, heating and electricity. And these are the contrasting other two plans. Don't have to go into too much detail here, but as you can see, the high plan, as I said, is approximately a million more, $3 million more. Definitely a much bigger town hall, bigger library, more space, actually adding on to the town hall, giving the current town hall as additional space for the historical, I'm sorry, jumped down. But the fifth line is a Historical Society Museum, actually adding additions and renovations for $1 million. So these were all numbers that we looked at. We talked about a lot. And then, like I said, we decided that we needed to move on to a little bit more responsible plan. The low plan is $1,003,000. And this does provide for exactly the same building. And the low plan actually would be somewhat more than this. And we don't have an estimate, but it's more than six figures to relocate all personnel. So as the town hall is being renovated, they would have to move. As the annex is being renovated, they would have to move. Library, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not a trivial amount of money. It's substantial. But we don't actually have estimates, but just anecdotally, we know that it's not trivial. The implementation plan, this whole plan assumes that the church property is available and the town does purchase it. The first thing that we would do is build a new town hall on the property. We would relocate the town administration, tax collection, building and code to the new building. And the good news is that they would all cohabitate in that one new building with lots of synergies between the groups. We would remove the annex from the site. The disposition is TBD. But we, this current plan is removing it from that site. And then we would renovate the current town hall, relocate and renovate the museum, the Historical Society Museum, and the Hobo Shed. Then we would relocate library essential functions to, I just listed all the possibilities, the current town hall, public safety. And the thinking here is that it is cheaper to build and renovate when the personnel are not in place and the objects are also not in place. So that's the reason for them. So basically, move them, hopefully quickly do those two bullets, build a library addition and renovate the existing library, and then move everyone back, which is the last piece. And then, of course, the final landscaping. And now the town center horseshoe is completely done and meeting the needs of the owners of the buildings, so to speak. So funding. The library has a couple capital reserve funds, one being the building capital reserve and the other capital reserve at, well, you can read, $386,000, $60,000. And then the foundation has collected donations of $77,000 to date. The town has the capital reserve fund. And just an asterisk there, the $45,000 or $46,000 of that is earmarked for town center expenditures. So the thinking is that those would not be needed and therefore could be folded into this project. And then the next one is potential source. So these are not earmarked for this project at all, but could be used, and that is other town building capital reserve fund monies and the undesignated fund balance. And that could be up to $600,000. Could be less, but it won't be more. So we've got the subtotals there. And then just to recap here, so we've got the medium cost plan at 3.4, and then subtracting the funding sources that are earmarked, the potential funding sources were left with an unfunded balance of $2 million and change. Julie ran the numbers for the $2.25 million bond, which is a little bit higher there, but probably a good number to work with, just to understand the impact. Year one, impact would be 6 cents per thousand. And year 20, which would be the highest, is at 40 cents per thousand. We looked at the Lee median home value, which is $226,000, for a total impact of $90.68 per year. And just, the bottom chart is not related to this, but just so that everyone understands what their current, what the current burden of the town is. And that's the Public Safety Complex bond retires in fiscal year '23 with an impact of 16 cents this year. So it's a little bit declining, but it's small. And the transfer station will retire fiscal year '24 at 8 cents. And again, that's this year. And then other funding opportunities. For the library, the foundation has expressed the willingness and the desire to continue raising funds when a plan is in place. They can't really raise funds for something that's completely intangible, but as soon as there's some lights beneath this, they're definitely planning to raise more money. The Heritage Commission has registered the, or is in the process of, I'm not quite certain, but I'm sure they are going to if they haven't already, registering the town center buildings. And those are the town hall, the Hobo Shed, and the freight depot. And the reason why the library old schoolhouse is not is because so many additions have been put onto it that the folks that they spoke with thought that it no longer was a true historical building. But the other three definitely are. And I'm not sure what it will yield in terms of grants, but most likely, the Hobo Shed is the one that's been given the most consideration because apparently it's the only one in the state. And they have expressed desire to be sure that the town of Lee preserves it. The last one is energy improvements. We're exploring grants, rebates, and in general, the building would be responsible in terms of, throughout our conversations over the last year, we've continued to talk about that we would be sure to make things energy efficient. Not sure that we're going to go to the top of the scale, but we definitely will take opportunities as we renovate to make sure that all of the buildings are, you know, as energy efficient as possible. And the recommended next steps. So we recommend that a new committee be initiated that's comprised of individuals who believe in the needs and historical value of maintaining the Lee Town Center. We strongly hope that they take the springboard from this group on to the next, that we don't start over again, but we take this plan and we start to move forward. Also, that the committee must be comprised of individuals who are willing to devote a significant amount of time because we really feel that without that, it just won't fly. It'll die again. We'd like to see a design with elevation drawings of the Lee Town Center future state. This is not anything elaborate. One, you know, one design would be plenty, but mostly as, so people can conceptualize what they're, what we're talking about. The current drawings that we have from AG Architects are all about the high plan, so they're really not relevant to this, to our thinking. We would like to validate the cost based on that design. We feel we've gone as far as we can without taking it to the next step. We feel they are very good estimates. Every estimate has a contingency of 10 percent and a design fee of 8 percent. So we've been, we feel we've been fairly generous, and it's a reasonable plan. To seek and apply for grants wherever possible, and to inform and educate the public via, as I just listed, a few possibilities. I'm sure there are many folks in the town of Lee that are public relations or have other good ideas to engage. I know the public forums that were held in January and February, it was repeat customers for the most part. So we really need to get out to those that are beyond that group so that they understand what the benefits are of doing a project such as this. Then we move to appendices, which I don't think we need to really go into. It's basically the inventory of the buildings, assessments, several of them, population growth, et cetera. The high, medium, and low plan is an Excel spreadsheet in PDF format which was posted on to the website today. And the evaluation worksheet, which is really the matrix of scoring that I talked about at the very beginning, is also on the website. That was there. The new one is actually the high, medium, low plan with these numbers. And that's it. Thank you. Any questions?
Right, please. First of all, thank you very much for chairing this committee and all the members who put a lot of work into it. Obviously, there's a lot of detail, and there must have been some major discussion. I am truly shocked that you want to keep the Hobo Shed because I'm the one that wanted to burn it down. So I'll have to back off at this point. Obviously, there's a...
The state's overruling it.
Well, there's only one in the state. I guess it should be preserved at this time. I agree with you. I mean, there's opportunities out here for funding that could be sought out. So your wish is to sunset this committee and establish a new committee?
Well, my understanding is that this is the termination of this committee.
Yes, it is. That's correct. And do you have visions of membership in this new committee?
I do not.
Questions from the board?
Well, I have a couple. One is, I noticed on the sheet where you talk about town center. Would I be accurate if I said that we appear to be running on two definitions of town center? Call it the traditional town center, which is our horseshoe. And a lot of people refer to that, and most people, I think, refer to that or think of that when you say town center. But in fact, town center in the definition that we gave it, I'm going to say last year or the year before, extends a half a mile out or something like that.
Right, absolutely.
So is it fair to say that, for the most part, the influence is to stay as close to the traditional town center as possible? I mean, did you feel that?
Yes. I mean, when we did the factors in terms of evaluating, you know, what was important, they, as I talked about, creating the town campus was number one. Well, they were all 10s. So that was a 10. Preserve the historical context and perceive part of town center were one of the top three. All 10s. And it was interesting because there was a little difference on the committee at different times on that point, but the public in the February forum spoke loud and clear for that.
Want to open up the floor? Anybody else ask questions for the committee at this time?
Maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but I'm wondering when we might go for bond. And, okay. I'm getting ahead of myself.
That was a late look, if it was over.
But it would be nice to get this process going forward. You know, so it seems like time is of the essence.
And I agree. I think the board of selection will have to digest the report at this time. But yes, I...
We've been going through this for, I don't know how many years. And it would be nice to see some real progress being made.
Right. And that was exactly the point of the recommended next steps, that we don't let it sit and start over in six months, but that we continue forward, you know, whichever committee that is, but that we move forward.
Question then, since you brought that up, since you have an implementation plan, what's the, do you have any visions on the scope of the implementation plan from beginning to end?
You mean duration?
Yes.
Yeah. We did not go to that.
Okay.
Did not.
Any other comments or questions at this time? Please, go for it.
First of all, it's a very complete report. It's impressive to see everything up there that we could read and hear about it at the same time. So thank you very... So thank you very much and all the committee members. I did want to, I was a little worried about energy efficiency because in our look at energy over the past year or so, our energy committee, we've been impressed with how quickly that moves. And I want to be assured, I guess, that in everything else that has to be done, that the committee that helps plan this building and gets it built is right on top of energy and what needs to be done. It's not only efficiency, though that's very important, but it's looking ahead a little bit and trying to see what's coming down the pipe in a year, six months, and so forth, which may not have been seen as efficient. And our energy committee is very small, but we'd be happy to help if we can. So thank you for this chance.
No, I think all committees will be asked, this is not going to be one of those opportunities where it's just faced here. Obviously, input is extremely important. Please, come forward.
Paul Gazowski, 46, Library Lane. Thank the committee for their work, and it's a really fine report. And particularly thank Deborah for her skills, you know, exceptional skills at working with people. I have two questions. A lot of this is contingent on the purchase of the church property. And before a new committee is formed and charged, what is the estimated timeline for knowing when that property is either in play or out of play? That's question number one. And looking at the report, if, if the property is out of play, that means that Plan B, which is Stevens Field, the Town Hall, comes into play. What about, how do the pieces on the horseshoe get moved around? If the Town Hall goes to Stevens Field and we don't have the church property, what does the configuration look like in the horseshoe, particularly in an attempt to add 3,400 square feet to the library? Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Minister, do you have any comments with respect to the church property?
Just that the select board has made an offer to the church. The select board has made an offer to the church. Sorry, we're still getting used to the new mics. And we are waiting for an answer back from the church. My understanding, based on the last conversations, is that we probably won't know until December. And then we would, assuming that the church approves that or accepts the offer or there's some sort of negotiation, it would still have to go to a warrant article to the legislative body. So the absolute earliest we would know whether it was a go would be March.
Thank you. With respect to your second question, Deborah, do you have any comment on the Stevens Field issue?
Yes, we do. Because if the, if the Town Hall was relocated to the Stevens Field, so would also the code enforcement be moved as well, freeing up that space? And so the Freight Depot could be moved, allowing the library expansion.
Any other questions and comments? Anything else on the board at this time? And if board of selection accepts the report, will obviously take it into discussion. If we have questions, we know who to go to. And we will consider your recommendation for a continuing committee. I think is, obviously, a must at this time. And we'll be looking for maybe some input from the committee and the chairperson with respect to possible membership. Thank you very much for all your effort. You did a great job. Next item in business, Randy Stevens, Highway Supervisor Assault Contract for Year 17/18. We're losing our audience. That's okay.
This is just the same old thing we do every year. It's a state bid price. Many towns have tried to beat it and they haven't had much luck. So especially small towns like us, piggyback on the state bid. I'm not sure just which one of the two got it. I think Granite State got it, but then Martin will match it usually. However, whatever one does, the other matches. So I got this little chart here. It shows hot pot, too, as well as salt. Salt's the green one. I'll pass it around. But you can see it has its ups and downs. It went down for a few years and now, because we had a busy winter last winter, it was a little more than in and the price went up a little bit, but not much. It went up from 51.73 to 53.30, so another big jump. So anyway, we just look, we try to buy from both vendors because sometimes when it runs out and then you don't have any. Unfortunately, we can only store about 200 tons in our facility, so we get down too low to try to order two and keep it up. 60 tons, we order 60 at a time, try to keep it full, just in case.
Comments, questions on the board? Therefore, I move to authorize the Highway Supervisor enter an agreement with both Morton's salt, Farnesby, 300 tons, Granite State, Minerals, Farnesby, 200 tons for the purchase of Farnesby, 500 tons of winter bulb, de-icing salt for the 2017/18 winter season at state bid price. Any other discussions? Hearing out on favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Item five, Larry Kenberg, Recreation Committee Chair, Little River Park Landscape Plan.
Hopefully, you got my revised report that I did this morning. There was an error in the original one that I sent out. August 14th, we met, or I met with the Conservation Commission as directed by the last meeting of the board to work out the details of the tree planting. There were some issues with regard to the types of trees that we wanted to plant. We came to an agreement on that, and you have all the documentation there with regard to that. We're removing the questionable trees and replacing them with more native trees to the area. And we actually have an opportunity to get a much larger pin oak than what we had originally planned on. So the quote, the final quote that came in was for $4,270.89 as compared to the original one, which was 39.7364, so about $300 more, but that accounts for the larger oak that goes in there. What is not accounted for in there is the $500 gift certificate that we also have with the tuckaway, which will reduce that amount. So with your approval, we'd like to go forward with that.
Questions and comments?
How do we have to, this is a question for the town, how do we have to structure that since we're using the gift certificate? I mean, we have to do gross budgeting when we do warrants, but...
I guess I would assume when we get the final invoice, it's going to be on credit, that it would have a credit of $500 taken off.
Any issues at this time?
No.
Therefore, I move to accept both proposed tree landscaping plan, irrigation system plan, and authorize Recreation Commission to afford with the contracting, packaway nursery for the trees and planting in the amount of $1,270.89 and Hillside Landscaping Incorporated for irrigation in the amount not to exceed $3,000. Any further discussion?
Do you know how much the, the well house is going to cost us?
We got budgeted 1,800, I think, for materials, because I think it's going to come in under...
And where was that coming from? Because the warrant articles were $7,000 for, where we're spending 1,800 from?
Plus, we have nearly 4,000 in encumbered funds.
Right.
So...
So we have almost 11,000.
And the encumbered funds were going to cover the land, the actual purchase of the trees. That's why they were encumbered.
Okay.
And then we had the warrant article funds, which we're not using the whole amount of that. So there's, there's plenty of money in there to handle all of that.
So it's almost 11 something, 11.2?
Correct.
Okay.
Larry, there was some question last time about tree placement issues near the pavilion?
Uh, there is one question about a tree placement due to the Pig Rose Barbecue Pit. And I have to get together with Eric Sotell, that is to be determined where that tree will be relocated to, but we'll work that out so it doesn't interfere.
Motion's on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you, Larry.
Item six, Karen Rossi, Lee Fair Representative, Horseshoe Pits.
Last year for the Lee Fair, we installed two temporary horseshoe pits. And now the fair committee would like to make them permanent. So Randy Stevens has agreed for the Highway Department to do them. The fair will pay for the cost of everything, but because it's town property, we need permission from the board to install them.
Couple of questions. Where would they go? Has that been worked out with the Recreation Commission?
No. Randy has suggested a spot, but the Rec Commission and the Fair Committee is meeting Thursday night at 6:15 to make sure everybody's in agreement for the spots. And then if they are with this board's approval, Randy and the Highway crew will...
Well, I understand about horseshoe pits, you've got a rod sticking out. Does that be taken out?
Randy and I discussed that, but obviously, we have to talk to the rest of the committee. We discussed taking the rods out and the horseshoes out because I said, I said the horseshoes are going to just disappear. And Randy thought that the rod, people would get hurt on the rods.
Yeah, I don't want any impalement.
So we thought we'd take them out and then, you know, they'd be there for the fair and /or any other scheduled legitimate horseshoe tournaments or whatever that people would have at the park.
So would not be free to the public to go out there and slap around some horseshoes at this point? So it would be town control is what you're calling it at this time?
Right, unless they brought their own things, yes. Because Randy and I, we talked and we didn't think that that would be, we have to bring that to the committee, though.
Okay. Floor's open for discussion? Questions?
They could bring their own horseshoe kit. I mean, it comes in a little kit with two stakes and six shoes and...
Absolutely.
So they could do that.
And we'll just have the sandboxes permanently installed.
Maybe that answered my, my second question. Is that what they get? Do they get sand or do they get wood chips?
Clay.
They're getting sand and length.
Potter's clay is, is what it says.
I think they're getting sand.
They're getting length.
What's there? The old rattle pit sand.
Is this regulation?
It's the Lee Fair.
But they're regulation length.
Correct, yes.
So we could have tournaments if we wanted to.
Correct, yes.
I think you're getting spiked up over here.
You're welcome to come carry Thursday. Are you familiar with horseshoes?
A little bit.
That would be great if you wanted to come at 6:15 and give us some input because Randy and I are...
Pretty straightforward.
40 feet, pin to pin.
How high's the pin?
Distance counts.
You thought that, right?
I'm okay with it as long as the Rec Commission and the Fair Committee can be on what pavement is, I'm okay with it.
Oh, I thought it was going to be the same place we had it last year's fair.
No, that, we had issues with them being too close to the activities. So the spot that Randy suggests is over, if you look at the new building that they're building, to the left, kind of behind the tennis court and to the new building side of the playground, to go lengthwise.
That'd be better.
And they're, because they'll be away from the fields, away from, you know, the traffic and then yet still, and it's an area that they don't use, there's no irrigation, it's very sandy already. So they're not going to ruin anything by putting them there. And it's out of the drainage.
We're just going to do two pits or we're going to do two sets of?
I believe two sets. So four pits total.
Four boxes.
Does that sound okay to you, Larry?
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah, I spoke with Larry as well, and he's the one who told me I needed to come get the board's approval.
Someday down the road, as the park gets to completion, we'd like to have a good drawing of all the layout of the trees, the horseshoe pits, tennis courts, and everything else.
That, that is coming very soon.
Okay. Pachibol. There we go. Therefore, I move to grant permission to have permanent horseshoe pits installed in Lee River Park. Set work to be completed by the Highway Department and the Lee Fair Committee members.
Thank you.
You have the caveat on that on condition that the fair and the Rec Commission agree on the location?
Absolutely.
You take that as a friendly...
Friendly then. All right, second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven, W Van Aitken Transfer Station miniature swap shop. Hope there's no historical value in that.
That was the last week, Friday. Chip and I were swoping out the whole site and found that at this location here, you'll see on the drawing, it's a good location for the swap shop. It's right next to the Balki Building. And on the back on the previous page, there's, there's a drawing that Chip and I were working on. And it shows the layout of the thing, of the whole swap shop. In the front half of it, if you look at the front half, you're looking at, see page two. Page two is on the side. And that, that right there on the side, if you look at the drone in the front, this will encourage the residents or anybody else dropping things off to go around and park out to the right. It allows a lot more parking spots for the residents and the location. And they could just drop off and move on. And also, too, the tenant is going to be there, that he could actually monitor the whole, the whole setup of everything being, to help the volunteers out at the same time. Anything you want to get rid of, anything you want to purchase tickets for, and so forth. And we're going to relocate the PT can, the pressure treated can, the location on, it's highlighted on the front page there, in the area that's, we're just going to put it there for now because during the area, in time during this year or maybe next year, we have to get in and replace that wall because the wall is starting to collapse a little bit. So this time, we just want to work, move forward on getting the swap shop going and attached to the Balki Building that has all the power and the heat. So if you look on the last page of the structure of it, so basically, it's turned out to be a, a two-car garage, basically what it is. It doesn't have to be insulated. And the residents or the volunteers could work in the swap shop itself, in the Balki Building, after we put a petition in there, we put a wall in, because we don't need the whole space. All we need is like a quarter of it just to do the money and the tickets and everything else. And on that side, it's heated, it's got a propane heater in there for now. And if the Energy Commission were, they were proposing, I guess, to put split units in there, they could put split units in both sides. And also, and then, we're going to have to upgrade the, the power. We're going to have to end up looking at that and get 100 amp service in due to putting these split units in. So each unit's going to, one unit probably be a 220, maybe both units might be 220s. But that condenser might be a 220 unit and all we can do is tie right into that. So, and the door going into the garage, we're looking at putting like a, a glass so you can see during the wintertime if we want to keep the doors closed. And the residents want to come in, they come into the door and the volunteers can monitor what's going on inside and give them a hand to unload or dispose of things, whatever it takes. So now we're looking at right now is attaching it right to the building, right to the Balki Building. And I think that's the best way to do it at this point because we looked at it all angles to, in the front, to the back. And I feel that the Balki Building, attach right to it, the tenant could monitor everything, dispose of it, to help clean it up out there. And plus, during the wintertime or any storms or anything, we just keep everything inside of the garage, close the door, and then open back up, it may be.
Questions on the board?
Somebody, when you talk about a door, are you talking about an electric door that...
Uh, we could do electric, but we don't have to. It's a whole regular garage door, just a, a regular 12-foot.
It's a pretty good sized door.
Yep.
But what about, what about those plastic, those clear plastic curtains that hang down? You can drive through them. They're strands.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. You can drive through, it's like they have those warehouses. Yep.
Would that be worthwhile considering? I mean, I can just picture somebody having to open a door every two minutes when a car pulls up or something as opposed to...
as opposed to... I mean, they block off the entire entrance.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's just going to be... It's not going to be insulated, so it's going to be opened up anyway. So we don't have to have a solid door.
There's a door in the front anyway, so they can...
We have a side door. So if you want to unload or take out, whatever, vice versa, you can come in there and... Also, it's all contained inside. And during the winter time, if we decide to go ahead and keep it in the winter time, keep it running.
I see how it works.
Do you have any estimated cost of...
Not yet. I'll have it in a couple of weeks because I got a conversation with Tom Duran about all this. Let's see if we can keep it in-house or get a contract and do it.
Town administrator, would this be something we'd have to go to legislative body or something we can handle internally?
No, the select board can decide to do it.
Well, we have money from... There's a board on it, or in the energy committee. Part of that is for doing something with it.
Correct, the energy.
I don't remember how much it was.
I don't recall either how much they have for this. I don't want to misspeak. But I do think it's less than $10,000, but more than five.
I think it was nine sometime. But there was a whole bunch of different things. Because that... This is only one of the things that we... The other thing, Toby, I don't know if you have it in here someplace where you and I spoke about it, but parking spaces dedicated to the swap shop. I know some space there, so I don't know if there's any cost associated with that, but I'd like it so that there's some spaces where people can just pull off. I don't want the parking on the...
Right. If you look at the diagram, you look at the picture.
Yep.
Right off to the right, there's plenty of room that Chip and I were looking at and visualizing. And just, they could actually face the vehicles heading out and forward. And they get stacked side by side. And that allows the traffic, whoever's unloading in the bulky building and also who doesn't unload, they can continue on and keep that road open. So there is plenty of parking on that one side. By having those doors on that side, it will encourage everybody to pull in that way. But those tars, anything about those tars, because we have to use those. Because we have to use them anyways. We're planning on using it for the safety aspect of it. For throwing bottles in, we don't get all over the place. So we're going to use that as part of the safety in the items we have to do anyways. Obviously, you got the other slip there from what the insurance guy said.
Yes.
Maybe when this goes through and is fruition and the old swap shop is available, the chairman is always seeking to have a burn down on something. Maybe we can run that.
I really appreciate that.
I'm always thinking of each other.
You know, we can have a weenie roast in the backyard. We're going at this. We could throw in some funds.
We'll see about the weenie part, but...
First of all, Toby, let me thank you for your effort on this. It's nice drawings. I think I said it's well thought out. At this time, I guess I'll ask you to... Obviously, I need...
Numbers.
I checked. I need numbers, but, you know, something like a letter from the police chief and the fire chief. At least they looked at it.
Oh, absolutely.
And so we have something comes in. And also, obviously, we want the energy committee involved so they can make recommendations to you. But obviously, being that the transfer station manager, you're controlling the project at this time. You're taking the lead.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Also, through the... We were... The energy commission was actually proposing a building, a separate building. So this cost should be right down, cut right in half, just about what it was going to build. Because you have to put a separate line in. You've got to insulate the building. You've got to do all kinds of stuff to it. There's a separate, you know, security system and all that. So this is attached. You just run the lines and you're done.
And do you have an estimate of how long this would take to do?
Well, you know, we could pick at it because we could actually work it during operations. So we don't have to do it off time. So we could continue operating the facility while building, structuring, building it. So I don't have the exact time. I don't have any round numbers, but I'll have that for you.
Tell numbers and some duration time would be good, letters of support.
Oh, I'll have it nailed down in the next meeting. Then I can decide from there.
Town administrator, any questions? Anything else on the board?
Can we also empower Mr. Van Aken? Because there's other things besides the swap shop that was in the energy committee proposals. Can we empower Mr. Van Aken to work with them to initiate those particular things as well? There's insulation in the office. There's a few other things.
Well, they were... I think they were already doing that.
They did combine...
Some insulation around the hydraulic tanks of the compactors for the oil heater, etc.
Right, right. There's a... There was something else too that actually you and I were looking at is putting the... That'll help on the energy part of them, those units. Is put a canopy over the cans. And it's so the wind and snow winter and stuff doesn't hit it all the time solid. But you got it, it's blocked. So it's those type of canopies that the state uses. I think it was, if you look at the state, they have these tars, poles. And so that, those are reasonable prices. It's attached right up to the blocks we have after we relocate the blocks to where they need to be. And then have a company give us a price on it and incorporate that in. And I think that'll control a lot of the temperatures down underneath too. And then we could actually put the same type of drapes you mentioned about in down that area. So we can get in and get out all the time. We put something like a door in the winter time, it's going to get clogged up if we don't have the tarp. But at this point, we could use those tars, the drapes. In order to help on the energy part, of course, at this time.
There's a safety... I don't remember if it's in the premise thing or not. But one of the things that Toby was telling me is when they take the cans out, if there's going to storm or something, then somebody has to get up there and shovel that stuff off. And that's dangerous.
It is dangerous.
So, and also, wait, wait when the cans go out. So if it was covered, they could just go in, pull the can. They don't have to deal with the snow and then go to ice removal on the top and stuff. And also, water and stuff can get into the can and make a mess of this one.
Yeah, a lot of times, it was last several years since I've been working for the town that we have to get up there and chip the ice in between the ribs on that... On the one with the twin. Now that that can right now is actually in the CIP, it's ready to be replaced. So it's a matter of... I've gotten right now, I've got a couple of people right now give me some quotes on versus the octagon or the same unit. But if we have to do the same unit, we're going to try something a little different. But I'd rather do the octagon one because it's a lot cheaper, a few thousand dollars cheaper. So I think we end up taking that route, trying to keep the cost down on us. And then they're going to actually give us a price on the same thing with the open containers. So there is quite a few things I have at the works right now that I'd be having a lot more answers for.
You know, it stops at the primary evaluation.
Yep.
How far are you with respect to implementing these recommendations?
I started ordering a lot of the signs and doing some, getting some numbers on areas. And then we're going to start installing these items, to get going on them. So we get, try to get it complete by October. And we get it complete in September. And then we can, if he has to come back out here again and check it out, we can do it. You know, we'll be ready for him.
Well, I've said you worked, obviously, with the energy committee, but also worked with the town administrator to identify the funds that are necessary to complete the project. It looks very interesting to me. Further questions, you members? Thank you very much. Julie Glover, town administrator.
Thank you. At the last meeting, the police chief presented the Steph Grant paperwork and the board approved and signed it. Since then, he was notified by the state that some wording had to be changed. So the board is giving the initial sign. Not really hearing anything different about the market. The board is finding it's just some wording and that.
First of all, music. It's got a little line there. Thank you, Randy. Anything else?
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, I move to accept the consent the gentleman presented.
Thank you.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Town tenant, I move to accept the public number of the meeting minutes from August 14, 2017. Questions and comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I move to accept the manifest of number four, a week's payroll ending August 27, 2017.
Thank you.
All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
He gave you the pen. You need a horse to bar.
Yeah, I have a job all lined up for you based on your request.
No.
Can I ask you a question of the town secretary? This is a very important issue, so I need to... I'm on some of the forms on third and some of the forms on second.
Aye. I am not getting involved in...
Denise said you... I'm feeling out of sorts. Am I last, am I second? Where you feel like?
It's just a day.
Put him on the bar.
He was in the office too much today, much looking at the...
Please note that he doesn't mention that the same thing happens to me. If he goes to second, I go to third.
It's all about me. Come on, come on.
As long as I'm first, I don't give a damn.
Okay.
That I don't like to see.
Thank you very much.
Item number 12, miscellaneous unfinished business.
Can... There's somebody in the back.
We have miscellaneous unfinished business?
I do.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Shirley McKean and I live on Riverside Farm Drive. And I volunteer at the swap shop. I've been there for over 10 years and I must say thank you for letting us have a swap shop. It's amazing what comes in, but it's more amazing what goes out. And we really do save a lot of stuff from just being thrown out. We save, you know, people come in wanting things and needing certain things, and it's there for them. So I just wanted to say thank you. This new proposal looks amazing because our old building is a little dilapidated, you might have noticed. So thank you for anything you can do to help us to get our new place.
Thank you for the comment. Appreciate it.
And thank you for your service too.
Oh, you're welcome.
That doesn't happen without volunteers.
I enjoy my work.
I know stuff goes in and goes out because I've probably taken a hundred books out of there already. I'm a hog for old historical books, you know?
We are a reading community.
Yes, we are.
Did you see the boxes that came in on Tuesday?
No, I must have missed those. Oh, my gosh. I don't have any room to stack in my library anymore.
One other item I'd like to bring up, we had started discussing a while back. I'll put it back on the floor. Is do we want to provide any direction to the different departments? The budget season is coming up. Do we want to hold the line of budgets? There a further discussion? Julie, you had done a write-up for me what you expected the increase might be if we passed everything. You want to speak to that, please?
Oh, I always hesitate to talk about what the tax rate might be, which we won't be setting the tax rate till, let's say, October. October, November, because you never know exactly what the state's going to do. But based on the budget that was passed, it looks like there could be a tax rate of, I think it was $1.73 per thousand. And when the superintendent of schools appeared before this board a few months ago, the information that he provided showed that we could expect, that we could expect a 66-cent increase in the tax rate. Now, that $1.73 that I mentioned is without the select board using any money from the unassigned fund balance, which, of course, you can do. Again, I hesitate just because so many different factors go into the tax rate. But based on the numbers that I ran, that's what it potentially looked like.
And do you have any vision of... Normally, we throw some stuff against the tax base. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Do you mean from the unassigned fund balance or...
Yes, yes.
Well, for tax year 2016, the town used over $500,000 from the unassigned fund balance to bring down the tax rate. That was a combination of using the unassigned fund balance to fund capital reserve funds and just applying it at the time when you set the tax rate. So... And the board, I think, the year prior to that had used, I think it was $425,000 from the unassigned fund balance, which brought the tax rate down. So when you look at an increase of $1.73, that's based on the past two years being brought down by using the unassigned fund balance. Otherwise, the tax rate would have been much higher in the past two years had the board not done that. But this year, we did not use any of the unassigned fund balance to fund the capital reserve fund.
Correct me. Did we make a decision on what the minimum was going to be for the unassigned fund balance? And that was 1.8?
1.5.
1.5?
So right now, what are we bringing?
I think right now, we have about 1.8. And I actually thought that the board had decided on 1.8, but I would have to look it up.
I thought it was 1.5.
Yeah, I think you better look that one up again.
Yeah.
Report to us next time. I want to think about this a little bit because I don't... Any vision when the energy budget committee starts to meet?
They should start next month.
Next month, so maybe...
At some point?
Yeah. I'd like to have a little bit further discussion. Let's think about it. And I mean, next time we meet, is there a recommendation we want to make or are not at this time?
Just a reminder that because we're doing the budget differently this year, everybody was advised that they needed to have their budgets into the finance office by September. everybody was advised that they needed to have their budgets into the finance office by September 15th.
Does it cut us a lot of slack, does it?
No, so that would be just after the next Select Board meeting.
So I'm getting a little bit concerned. You know, it's not like we have a very excessive fund balance at this time to throw against, you know, the tax base. I'm almost feeling that recommend that we should kind of like make it a flatline as much as we can at this time.
Well, see, also, we don't know how much to be dumped in after they do the audit. Exactly, so I don't know what joint's numbers we're looking at, but it wasn't very much.
It's not very much, it's not as much as it has been in past years.
So we'll have to take a leak and see what that is.
All right, let's see what...
After they do all their machinations.
And we'll bring this up, so put it on the agenda for next time as well.
You started this conversation talking about whether we wanted to go in and say that we want to hold the line on budgets.
That's correct. That's what I'm looking at.
And I think that's exactly what we need to do.
Yeah, we want to hold the line at this point, because we, you know, there is, we had a lot more fund balance to play with last time, we don't have as much fund balance to play with this time. And obviously, we did take the policy that we want to replace old vehicles with new ones, and we're moving in that general direction. So we need to hold in other places at this time.
Can we also put it on the agenda for the next time to talk about the facilities committee recommendation? Because that needs to move.
Absolutely, very quickly. Yeah, I'd like to definitely consider forming a new committees, this one sunsetted. Form a new committee with a different charge, it's different than the previous one. I agree, I don't want to have Deborah or anybody else rehash all this stuff all over again. I mean, it was a nice job, just take what we have and move forward at this point. I do appreciate the fact that probably his money's out there to help us with renovation of the Town Hall and the Hobo Shed, you know, there might be opportunities out there as well, we need to stop looking at that.
The grant programs from the state, Laura Cox has been having conversations with the group that does that. And they're finding, because they know what we have, their opinions are, the Town Hall is definitely eligible. It's something that would sky very able to score very highly on a grant program with them. The Hobo Shed would score very highly as well, because it's the only one left in the state that can be identified as a Hobo Shed, so they value that. The Freight Depot will score low in terms of it's been moved three times.
Yes.
But it's very, there's very few of them left, so it would score adequate for that. And I think Deborah alluded to, before, the library is a historical building. The front part is historical, but it would score very, very low, because it's been added on so many times. So not that it wouldn't score, but it wouldn't score high enough to beat out other things for grant lines, so...
Well, what is, what is the process going to be to select which, which one of the options goes forward?
Well, yeah, I guess at this time, it depends on the church property, whether it's gonna be there or in the Stevens Field. Obviously, the high option is dead, and I do agree that the low option is probably not a consideration. That's a lot of money, without getting a lot of bank for a buck. So that second option, I agree with the recommendations of the committee, is probably the best option at this time. I guess we have to wait to see what the church makes a decision on which way we want to go. Or, as we form the next committee, it's which over, either this one or that one, you can start working in. But I do realize that we need someone who knows how to sell things. Not all of us, it's definitely not me, I'm not a person who can come up and sell things, but there are certain people who can know how to talk to people about the need, and watching the Town Administrator crawl in the Town Hall in her suit and everything. Which is a class that I will kingdom come, because we'll get a lot of mileage on this. I wonder how we hit to get on YouTube if we start going out there, I think I'd be worried.
You're not out yet?
But this type of stuff in the equire and public aid that we've got a building that has historical merit, and it needs renovation, but to do that renovation, we gotta do something else. So we need to start building a case, so maybe this next committee has more than just looking at Stevens Field versus this other one, and then start building, you know, landscaping designs and thoughts and elevations and so forth, and design structures. But how would we sell this to the public? I think that's pretty important as well.
The committee talked about that significantly, in terms of how you get the information out, because for the people on the committee, we've been doing this long enough that we don't have to be sold, we understand that, but how do you transfer that knowledge to other people? And when we had the town meeting, you could do a presentation, you've got the people that are gonna be voting there, you don't have that anymore. So how do you get the six, nine hundred people that come to vote, this information? On the 250 county, we sent out flyers and stuff, and people said, well, what flyers? So that's gonna be a challenge. I think one of the things, we had a conversation, or I had a conversation with one lady that had this similar problem up in Chikora, and she said, we're enough. That's the thing that worked for them. So somebody, talking to somebody who talks to somebody, that kind of thing. But she says it's not unique to us, we're not unique, that, you know, part of the people that vote don't participate as actively as others. So I think that's gonna be a challenge for the committee, to get that information out, so that people understand, okay, this is the state of the buildings, this is what we're proposing, and see where it goes.
Well, I do appreciate the committee identifying different sources of funds, whether it be from, you know, historical commissions, or grants within the state itself, or obviously, the library has funds that are built in for the library alone, but that's a chunk of money to help the renovation of the library piece itself.
And I think Deborah did it too. Katrinka can also probably weigh in, but when we have a clear plan of what it is, that's when they can go out and see if they can get other funds and pledges and stuff like that. But until you have something like that, you can't ask people for money. Well, what are you asking your money for? You don't have a plan, so the plan has to come, so before they can ask for additional funds.
But the library, the library, basically, if I read the presentation correctly, is a dumb deal. I mean, they know what they want to add, they have the money, they have the money to do it. I'm assuming there's some sketches out or whatever that shows the footprint of how it would fit, how it would fit on the land.
We have a, yeah, a rough...
Okay. So, so I mean, basically, basically, that's, that's pretty much, that's pretty much a dumb deal. You don't have to go, it's their money, they can, they can spend it. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I agree, that money is a lottery.
There is a very big but, we can't expand until the Freight Depot is moved.
Okay. Okay, now that I understand, but I mean, that's, okay, we have to move the Freight Depot. But basically, you can, you can tell the people, here's what we're gonna do with the library, and oh, by the way, here's the options you have for Town Hall. You don't have to sell the library. The library, the library project can happen, what?
I think you had to sell the whole thing.
I think, I think it'll...
I don't know why you put a big number up there when, when, when you know that that's gonna be one of the biggest issues is, the first thing they're gonna look at is how much? First thing they're gonna look at, so why put the number in there? If the library wants to make a decision to expand the library and use their funds that are already in place for it, has no impact on the taxpayer, just take it out, just take it out of the equation.
But it does have impact. It's a million five, the library might have about five hundred thousand, so...
So we're like halfway there.
A third, a third right there, about a third.
Excuse me, if you want to talk, you ought to come to the podium, otherwise, you need to be recorded.
Sorry. The library is at 1.5, and the, I mean, rough numbers, we have a four, four sixteen, probably five and a quarter funded, so there's, I mean, round number is still about a million, Charlie. So it's about a third of the way there.
Right, Carrie, I do understand what you're saying. They have a plan, they have an idea.
If it's a half a million that they already have, and they have a plan for one, then the one is what we should be going out there, putting in, putting in the total, not the 1.5.
Well, except you are subtracting that, so that the bond is a 2.25 bond, it's not a three and a half million bond. And so the funds are helping to, the library portion of the funds, so the taxpayers have already, you know, earmarked, are reducing the amount of the bond.
Yeah, the selling, selling point to the legislative body here is that if we can identify funds from the state to help with the Town Halls, it's historical merit.
Pretty much.
Yeah, but as long as we can identify that we're looking for funds, because someone's gonna say, did you search here first? So this next committee has to have some bite, so I'll be looking towards both of you for recommendations for membership of the committee. Some people know how to go after bite.
The other... Oh, go, go. Oh, yes, Katrinka Polak, yeah, Woodsboro. I was also gonna point out that the Historical Society is also a 501(c)(3), the same as the Library Foundation, and I would hope, I mean, I don't want us to be competing...
Absolutely not, gotta work together.
But they'll prob, you know, they probably have different avenues to tap than we know about. So I would hope that they would do fundraising as well.
And the only other thing I was gonna bring up is that in the, in the, in the model, the medium cross-plan model, the site, the site work is apportioned to each one of those buildings. So if you do one, it bears the brunt, and so it's no longer the 1.5. So the idea being that there's so many synergies to doing these together, and having, you know, one septic system, one well, you know, your services, your internet services, all of this, as a well bought-out plan, has a lot of merit in terms of reducing the cost overall.
And the final point to make is that we could, even if you moved the Freight Depot and expanded the Town Hall, but there's no parking. We're woefully inadequate.
I do understand that.
So it...
Hard to do one without the other, it's hard to do the two sides.
Thank you for your comments, we appreciate it.
Well, I just hate to put in so much effort when we have to wait till, what did you say, December? To get some kind of response from the church. I mean, I know we have to, we have to move forward, but there's not a whole lot you can do, and it's a key decision, I mean, if it...
I think there's a lot of planning you can do.
Oh, there's some planning you can do.
The Stevens Field one, and you can develop, plan the other one.
The plan is, depending on the church.
Yes, it is. It's a key point.
It's gonna be the same building, it could be the same building if it's... I'm not used to it, I've been here for a while.
Wait, you...
I was gonna say, it would be, you could design the same building to go on the church. I mean, and I know you, you know, Scott's nodding his head, yeah, I've been over that. But it could be the same design, so that you could still proceed with, there would be, you know, the additional expenses would be the septic, you'd have to figure an operation, there'd be two lots to plow as opposed to one, you know, those kinds of things. But I think you could proceed.
Well, I think, I think that there's a lot of support for a library expansion. I mean, even if you just said, oh, we're gonna do the library expansion, I think there's a lot of support for a library, for a library expansion. And I think there's a lot of support for the Town Hall, I'll call it refurbishment. After that, I think it's a tougher sell. And that's why I'm just trying to understand the right way to go forward, to try and put something together to sell. I think, I think the library can happen without any major problems at all, to be honest with you, from the people I've talked to. And everybody feels strongly about fixing Town Hall. And I think that we can get support for a new Town Hall. Good question's just gonna be, you know, where's it, where's it gonna be, and then how much will that be?
It's opportunity time, as you said, the transfer station and public safety complex will be, what was it, 2023?
23 and 24.
Not that far away, but it's, the numbers are going down, it's all over. So it's like anything else, one bond goes away, and we just pick up another. We gotta get it before the school gets in there, so. Middle school's gonna happen sooner or later, and that's gonna be a big...
Well, that's just for the rest.
So you gotta slip in before that occurs.
Another thing, we looked at the cost, the cost of doing the Town Hall in Stevens Field versus on the church property, they're just about the same. Because the additional cost for the septic system and well and stuff on this particular parcel is negated by, you don't have to pay for the church property. So they're about the same, so you can think about it that way. But yeah. All right, selling, the selling part is...
There's the selling part, that's...
So can we put it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Talk about how the, that whole thing...
Absolutely. Anything else? Julie, there you go.
Fair week for this one, Saturday night.
Yes.
Come, I'm gonna be in my outfit, so you can come in.
Yeah, baby.
What outfit is it, which, which outfit is it? My colonial outfit.
Thanks, get some use out of that baby. All right, move to a journal.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.